Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Board of School Directors meeting. I'd like to start off with roll call, please.
Mr. Foose?
Here.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mr. Breeze?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Here.
Mrs. Denon?
Here.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Deroff?
Present.
Mr. Elsier?
Here.
All present.
All right, now pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is announcement of previous executive sessions. On June 18th, we had 10 minutes for personnel followed by an hour and 25 minutes for collective bargaining discussion. On July 9th, 45 minutes for personnel and land acquisition, or potential land acquisition, I should say. July 16th of 2019, one hour for personnel, legal, and collective bargaining. So with that, we have public comment period number one. And I've been given the sign that no one has signed up. Next up, we have approval of the minutes, and this was from our last school board meeting. So looking for a motion. This was from June 11th. Okay, Mr. Breeze moves. Second, Mr. Boyer. Any questions or comments on the minutes from that meeting? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please. Okay, all right, we're kind of locked up here on it. Go ahead.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have our finance report. We have the treasurer's report from June 2019 as well as the food service treasurer's report from June 2019.
Tonight, we'll be looking at the June 30th report, and there are a few things that I want to point out that I wouldn't normally be pointing out. And the very first one is that you will see on your report that this is a preliminary report. At this time of year, we are doing those finalized recordings of things that happen after June that apply to the 18-19 school year. So when you see things in the column for June 30th, you are seeing some of the things that are recorded, all of the June activity, as well as what we have recorded so far that has occurred in July and that we have good estimates for, or we have knowledge of what's going to happen in July, August, and even into September. So that is what you're looking at there. And as usual, if you would please turn to the pages where we see our revenues and expenditures, and I'll just point out a few things. In those two periods that I talked about, we've taken in approximately $2.8 million in local funds. And of that, $1.3 million actually occurred in the month of June, and an additional $1.5 was recorded after the end of the year. For state revenue of that $8.2 million that you see, $3.8 was received in June, and we have recorded an additional $4.4 million in revenues from the state that has occurred so far, or that we have good estimates for. You also see the federal funds for $60,000, and that is only at this time what we did receive in the month of June. So when you look at the expenditures, as always, I always point out salaries and benefits are by far the largest portion of our expenditures. You are used to seeing salaries and benefits in a normal two-pay month of approximately $7 million. If you add those two numbers there, you will see that we're looking at approximately $16.8 million. And that is because over the summer in July and August, the teachers receive payroll checks or direct deposit that actually applies to the 18-19 school year. So that is recorded there. So what you are seeing there is all of the payrolls from the month of June as well as the teacher summer pays. So I normally don't do this, but if you would just quickly look at page one where we have the balance sheet, and I just do want to point out because we are recording things that we have not actually, that occurred after the end of the year, you'll see that your receivables, you're normally looking at approximately $2 million in the average month, have now grown to $9 million. And the liabilities usually might see $8 or $9 million, depending on where we are waiting to pay for our retirement payments to the state, you might be seeing $8 or $9. Now you're looking at about $15 million in liabilities currently. So that is, again, those summer pays that are still owed, as well as some of the Peasers that's owed. So that's what I have on that. I do want to talk about a couple of things because obviously this time of year is something where we're very interested in looking at our results and seeing what's going on. So I have a really brief PowerPoint presentation. There we go. All right, so again, I do want to point out that that is the preliminary that we are looking at today. There we go. So overall, if you remember back to the sheets with the revenues and the expenditures, overall, the general fund revenues were under about $400,000. Now, we do know that we still have some items that still need to be recorded. There's some work that needs to be done with the expenditure side before we can actually do the revenues. So that is our IDEA, which is a pass-through of federal revenues that we receive from Berks County Intermediate Unit, based on our IDEA expenditures, as well as the access, which is a federal revenue. So I will say that local revenues this year were the star of the show. We did better than anticipated, almost $900,000. The major contributor there is some good economic conditions. The largest portion of that was our earned income that exceeded its budget. And just to point out that between the 18-19 budget and the 19-20 budget, we did increase the earned income budget by $400,000. All right, in some areas, we are under currently. State revenues are below budget. We did have several areas that came in lower than we anticipated, and one issue that we did have was, I'm sure this has been talked about previously, but just to remind you that we did have an item that was budgeted twice in the state revenue area. And two of the areas that are lower than we budgeted are social security and retirement revenue, and we would anticipate that when we look at where we are with the salaries and the benefits. Federal revenues are also lower than was budgeted. We do have that access that I talked about that we still need to record. But on the bright side, with federal revenues, you would expect, because revenues and expenditures are very tied together, that if our federal revenues are lower, the expenditures in those areas will be lower as well. Now, going back to that report on the expenditures that we looked at initially, we see that we are $2.2 million under budget. The vast majority of that is in salaries and benefits, about $1.3 million under budget in salaries and benefits. I do want to point out that the majority of those savings were realized from vacancies that were not filled during the year and from the turnover. If you even think about my position, I'm the third person in my position in 18-19. So we did have some of that turnover during the year that people were not being paid while there were vacancies. So those are one-time savings. It would be much better for us to have those vacancies filled and to have things, you know, classrooms covered and jobs covered. I know there's custodial vacancies as well, so I did want to point that out. We did earlier in the year than we normally do, put on a spending freeze as well as there were savings identified by our staff. So this is good news. Overall, we are expecting to do much better than what was in our budget. However, we do have some considerations. Oops, I skipped something. I skipped a slide, I'm sorry. I did want to point out that there is some additional work that will be done. Again, I'm going back to that preliminary that we will be continuing to make some changes. Things will happen that we don't know yet that will help us make better estimates. One of the things we do for the auditors, for the single audit, is the schedule of expenditures and federal awards, and that will affect whether our federal revenues will go up or down, depending on whether we need to accrue or defer revenue. And those will also affect our balance sheet. If you remember, we looked very briefly at the receivables, and a deferred revenue would be a liability if we would have to go in that direction. We also, one of the things we need to do in preparation for the audit is make sure that all of our balance sheet accounts are reconciled. As hard as we try not to do anything like this, it's possible that something could get recorded twice, and we very carefully go through all of our receivable accounts and our liabilities to make sure that nothing is double counted, that everything that should be in there is in there. We also receive an audit confirmation from the Department of Education, and we need to make sure that our revenues tie out to that as well. Our auditors will be looking for that. Tonight, we really focus on the general fund, but we still have similar work that needs to be done on our other funds, and in particular, in the Internal Service Fund. People will go to the doctor in May and June, but those claims may not be presented to us to pay until July, August, September. We receive a report in early September that allows us to record those costs that have been incurred but had not been recorded at the end of June. Now, we'll get back to the last slide. So it is looking at this point like it's pretty good. We do know that we do have some additional work that will impact what we're looking at, and at the August 13th meeting of the Finance, let me get it right, Finance Facilities and Operations Committee, we'll be looking at some of these considerations if this continues to look the way it does. We obviously have this list here that you're looking at of things that we need to carefully think about how we are going to address with the funds we have currently, or that we think we might have. So that's a little bit longer than I usually go. Are there any questions?
Okay, before we take questions, I think Dr. Benin just wants to add on to the presentation.
What is, I want to thank the staff for being responsive to decisions and directives that came out with regards to slowing our spending. If you recall, as Carol referred to, the double entry of one of the grants that in the last budget cycle, the governor made changes and collapsed a grant up under one category. Well, for us, that being, it was roughly about $950,000 that was doubled, and I'm sure that with all the turnover and transition, it was probably missed and being rectified. So we literally started close to a million dollars in the hole. So I would say that that's a compliment to overcome that situation walking into this budgetary year. Additionally, she highlighted it, those numbers that we're seeing right now, you know, if we're lucky, you really should look at that 2.2 as more like a million. That may be because 1.3 of it, as she said, is vacancies and turnovers. And ideally, you wouldn't have those. You want to have your full staff, because what's happening is we're working our staff to death, and you don't want those vacancies. And those are the type of funds you can't use to budget for recurring expenses, you know. The only benefit that comes from those is that you allocate it for one-time type of the thing going forward. I remind the board that the other issue is that we took a hit on our bond rating. I will tell you, I will say it again, I'm very just disturbed that a state would have a law that says your fund balance would only be, could be capped at 8%. You wouldn't manage your household that way. 8% for us would amount to, the team tells you, about one and a half months' worth of operating expense. So if we had a catastrophic event, we got basically 45 days we could function, and no businesses run that way. To, you know, so to protect us as you continue to have capital needs that are going to be coming down the road, we should always aspire to at least stay at that 8% so that we could not have the higher interest rates charged against the district, which actually cost us more money then, and the taxpayers. So those are the type of things. And the last two meetings I've gone to, Peasers has slowed at best. No one is ready to say it has stopped escalating. The best they can tell us is that it's slowed in its growth right now, but they will not say that it's finally topped out and peaked. So that is a continual concern that we will face. Of course, you got your update on analysis that PSBA did for our support staff and their salary schedules, you know, again, and we're hurting significantly on that side of our workforce. We're having a large turnover. Big part of it is because we have a lot of people aging out finally. And, you know, that is a challenge for us to backfill and to be market competitive going forward. And anything we do going forward has to be about fiscal sustainability. We cannot enter into situations where we can't sustain something and keep our ship afloat. We still have structural deficiencies. The fact of the matter is, you know, this last budget was balanced again using fund balance, so we've drawn it down even farther. So that means you have a structural deficiency, and that's not a good way to run this ship. That's equivalent of, as you know, of taking your savings account to pay your daily bills. That's a recipe for disaster for us. So we still have a lot of work to do to get it back in alignment. It is very difficult to build a fiscal sustainability plan with a budget that has structural deficiencies. As you receive the communication, our goal is try to figure out how to get it back balanced and then build your fiscal sustainability plan off of that, which is a plan in short version. Here's what we have to do, and here is what we are aspiring to do for the academic program that we want to offer, academic and social, emotional, all of those things for our students that we aspire to be. So it's what you got to pay for and what you aspire to offer, and what is it going to cost. But it's kind of hard to build it off of a budget that's upside down. As you know, for the past, what, four years at least, you've had this situation going where you've started a year out with about $2 or $3 million situation. This basically closes it a little bit, so hopefully we'll start off at a better starting point next year. There's a lot of work and conversation, as you know, going on now that the budget cycle doesn't start in November, and we're doing stuff now. And honestly, we probably should tweak the August 13th meeting to make it a combined meeting with regards to facilities, operations, and finance with the academic one, because it really is a conversation about getting us to start doing our budget based on our instructional priorities going forward. So a big chunk of that is what Carol described, but also the 13th, you remember, would be a conversation about really establishing a vision, mission, the goals, that then the instructional team will build off of that, our instructional priorities, which will say, if it isn't about this, then we shouldn't be talking about spending money on it, because that's where we are. There are a lot of nice things that we do, but we also got to start doing what we call strategic abandonment. And if it does not meet what we're expecting it to do, then we're going to have to let it go and stop some of the things that we're doing. And I will tell you, my last two weeks' meetings, because of the significant rain, it's actually identifying some things that we probably did not know that had issues with our facilities that are now showing, because the rain has revealed them, because we have water going places or not going places that shouldn't be, that are showing us that we got some issues going on that we didn't know about. So that's some of the aha that you're going to be getting. It's also revealed significant issues with erosion over by the tennis courts. We got erosion at the track on the bank, which probably is going to be expedited with more rain. So all those are hitting us all at the same time. So I'm sorry, I just had to make sure you had a reality check. Good news, but let's keep it in perspective. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so with that, looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Mr. Breeze, second. Mr. Lewis. Questions or comments for Ms. Pitts on the treasurer's report? Mr. Breeze?
I'd like to make a comment on the outstanding economy that's helping our Peasers and everything else, and that's really the result of what's happening right now in the jar market, so I'm happy to see that, and that was pointed out today. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Okay, next up is, actually, I guess I missed one. I did. Reported the President. So I don't really have a report, but I did just want to introduce, sitting to the right of Dr. Benin, is Michelle Mintz, who's sitting in for Jeff Sultanic, our normal solicitor as he's on vacation. So I just wanted to make sure you knew who that was, if you did not know. So welcome to Boyertown, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a special resolution, special report.
Mr. President, you received, and the board members before you, a resolution drafted by your legal counsel. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Obviously, you received it. It is also verbatim posted in board docs without having an attachment, and then there's attachment included that says basically the same thing. But the purpose of it, just to be clear, the short version, is this is something that's required by the school code anytime you are contemplating the closure of a school. So it has certain requirements with regards to conducting a public hearing. It speaks to the issue of a public notice that has to be given in a timeline, and then it also addresses requirement, what they call, for lack of a better term, a 90-day cooling off or waiting period that you may recall that was mentioned. With that in mind, typically, what has happened in the conversation with legal counsel is you back map from the date that you will be attempting to address the issue in a public, from the public hearing to before you would actually be able to make a decision on it. In this particular case, to make sure that the board that has been involved in this situation and been most briefed and aware of what is going on is still able to respond or address to it, we had to back map from the last possible date during your tenure, which happens to be obviously in November because you have a, the December, I forgot the term, what y'all call it?
Reorganization.
Reorganization. So back mapping from that put us in August, and then leaving a couple days for unknowns that if there's some reason, snow or weather, a buffer, but it has to happen during the same weeks. It is unfortunate, and I will go on record saying it now because it's someone, some people have noticed it and it will come up, that it lands unfortunately at the start of school in a time that we did not want to do anything like this before people were back, because we want to be transparent and participatory for the community, to be able to be engaged, but still have to meet the state requirements of the timeline. The fortunate part of that is unfortunate incident at Pine Forge makes it a sensitive issue, coming back to school and those types of things, and it being a topic of discussion. So we absolutely and administratively, and I will probably say the board would, and I can't speak for the board, but say that we recognize that as a sensitivity, want to continue to send our condolences to the family and the whole community family, but we do recognize that that's a sensitive issue and hope that they will understand the emotional situation that I know that when school's starting, that that community will be facing, but we were faced with complying with the law. And so this is something that you have to do by law that triggers a lot of the work that will require with advertising and communicating the process and the standards that will be required for you to have a hearing and then give a 90-day cooling off period, which is also other data, other information, other facts that you may want to consider prior to going to an actual voting meeting. With that, I will save our legal counsel, that I did not say, trying to sum it up without reading the whole thing.
I think you did an excellent job of summing up. I don't have anything to add at this point.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second on the resolution. Mrs. Denon, second. Mr. Lewis. Questions or comments on the resolution? Mrs. Deroff?
It's not on the resolution, but it's the way it works. Attorney Sultanic had explained to us, but some board members apparently were very confused, and I was hoping he'd be here tonight to reiterate what he said. He did say that we would have one hearing from the school district. He also said the state and the county, I'm sorry, the county and the township would also have input. They do not have hearings, and some of the board members, I think, are confused. They think they have hearings. I just wanted to clarify that, because I was going to ask him to clarify that tonight. There's only one hearing, and that is with the school district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
And just to add to that, the communication that goes to those bodies have already been drafted by Mr. Sultanic. They're sitting in my email. I'm waiting for this, and then I'll respond to him, giving the green light to send those communications out.
Ms. Nyman, and then I see Mr. Boyer in the queue.
I will not be supporting this for one reason. I think it's the wrong thing to do for our students. Our students will have great travel time, but I guess it doesn't matter because it's a Berks County school, so, and I know people don't want to hear that, but I'm saying it. Second reason, at several, a meeting prior to this, I had asked for classroom utilization, and we're probably going back two months now. I still, to this date, have not gotten it. As a board member, it's just appalling that I don't get the things. So spending this money now, and it might only be $10,000, $20,000, but it's money we don't have. It's money we don't have to go through these legal proceedings, and I, as a board member, haven't received that information, although there's several board members sitting here who think we've gotten it or they've gotten it, and we have all the room in the world for these students. We have all this building going on. Where are we going to put these children? I am appalled that anybody sitting here would want to do that to the students. And I heard at several meetings prior to this, where we can't bus the kids from one area more than 45 minutes, yet it's going to be fine to bus Pine Forge for longer than that, and they will be on a bus for an hour. So I will not vote for this.
Okay, other questions or comments? Mr. Boyer, I'm sorry, you are in the queue.
That's okay. I have a question for the attorney. The Douglas Township Planning Commission will be the body that examines this issue, or will it be the township supervisors?
That is something that I need to double-check on.
Okay, and when they do examine it, would it be at a public meeting?
Yes, it would.
And regarding the Berks County Planning Commission, when they examine this, it would be at a public session of the Berks County Planning Commission?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Okay, other questions or comments? And just so I understand, the hearing will have a lot of the decision logic involved, correct, as far as?
Absolutely. That's part of the process that you go through, and while you gave me the floor, the standard that was communicated in every meeting was for a standard to say that we would never increase any of the time more than the current 50 minutes. that we would never increase any of the, the time, uh, more than the current 50 minutes or ride time. Um, and I also shared during that presentation that they had identified a direct shuttle that was separate from, um, the regular route that they would put students on that would actually make it fit within the parameters had that, uh, decision, uh, been selected earlier in the process. So, my point is that I'll never say never to anything, but I will say that we have been very much, uh, committed to ensuring that, uh, whether you're a Berks County or Montgomery County student, that we did not extend, um, the time, uh, more than the current ride time that I heard was the longest from our transportation of, uh, 50 minutes, uh, ride time. And we will do what it takes, uh, to make sure that happens, uh, in this process. Um, I will also share that, uh, no matter what is decided, in this case, the objection is if this building closed, um, but when we say we don't have money, uh, part of the conversation that the administration presented, that if that decision was made, the opportunity for the board to, uh, actually have funds to reinvest in addressing some significant needs across the entire district. For example, we rolled out, uh, information that said you could use part of the money to address an egregious situation that happens every day to, uh, a large number of students. The ratio of counselor to student at Earl and Pine Forge is out of alignment with recommendations, just as it is in Gilbertsville. Uh, we rolled out a plan that said that we would have a ratio of 350 to 1 if that money was reinvested, uh, which is why it's not the 250, but it's significantly different than having one council for 700 students, example, in one school. Um, so, again, at the end of the day, um, there's an opportunity to improve things across the board should this be made. So, I would hope that, uh, whatever decision is made, I don't want people to think that you're spending money for a wasteful decision. It's about making an informed decision, and boards that are successful across the country make data-driven decisions. To make a decision without data would be an error, and part of the promise to the Pine Forge community was that we would bring a neutral person in to do the analysis and present it. And so, we spent money at the request of that community also to be transparent and neutral in the process, so I was honoring their request also in this process when we brought in an outside person, who, by the way, again, 40 years in the business as an administrator and over 20-plus years as a school board member. So, they've sat on both sides of the seat. Um, and again, I would hope that we start really talking about ourselves as being one Boyertown. I'm just consistently concerned that there's a Berks-Montgomery mentality, and at the end of the day, um, every student ends up in the one place before they graduate. Boyertown High School. They all come together at some point. Our children learn from us. If we say a Berks and Montgomery, they're taught that. They don't come out of a mother's womb thinking that. We're one Boyertown, they get one diploma, and I will assure you that as long as I'm sitting in this seat, I don't care where you sit in this district, the standard is going to be the same for what we try to do to serve you. And I guarantee you that's the way my lens will be regardless.
Okay, looking, uh, for, oh, we have another question or comment. Mrs. Deroff?
I just want to, uh, reiterate that on this hearing, if anybody cannot make it, does not want to come and justify, that a letter would be accepted, an email, whatever. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Because I think it's important that we let the public know that, even though we said it before. I think we should keep telling them that because there's a lot of elderly people in that area, and, uh, I think they might feel more comfortable with the letter. Thank you.
And just to solidify to Mr. Boyer's question, uh, Mr. Sultanic's, uh, letter will be going to Douglas Township Planning Commission and the Berks County Planning Commission, uh, to help you out. He sent it, she didn't have it. He sent it to me, so I looked it up right now to answer the question that you're asking.
Thank you.
Uh, so, that, now, what they do with it, well, that's who the communication will go to.
Yeah, my question is about whether or not that would be a public session, open to the public and public comment when those planning commissions examine that. That's, that's what I was going to, that's what I did ask.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Breeze?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes six to three.
Okay, next up is the secretary's report.
There is none.
Solicitor's report.
No report, thank you.
Okay, we now have the superintendent's report, uh, starting off with the consent agenda.
Mr. President and, uh, board members, uh, before you, you have the following consent agenda items. Item number A is, uh, the District Envelope Bid Award, where we are recommending, uh, the approval for the bid for the 2019-2020 school year. Item number B is approval on investment institutions, uh, where the administration is, uh, recommended board approves the list of investment institutions for, uh, next school year, 1920. Uh, you have item number C, which is, uh, per capita exoneration qualifications, uh, where we are, uh, asking the Board of Directors to grant tax collectors exoneration from collection of the per capita, uh, taxes. Uh, you have item number D, which is, uh, the approval of, uh, the lease with First American Education Finance for our bus, uh, security cameras. Uh, this was a change from, as, uh, presented to you in the committee meeting, just to remind you that, uh, a different company, that we were able to get a lower rate and save money, um, so that was brought forward to you. And you have item number E, a settlement agreement, uh, for student number 101452. Uh, item F, settlement agreement for student number 210446. Uh, item D, a settlement agreement for student number 240371, and I did not go into lengthy detail with those. Uh, they're in the minutes, but as you receive, because it's a student record information, uh, I think at least two of those are extensions, so they're not new, uh, items. So, at this time, uh, we requested the Board of School Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second. Mrs. Deroff, a second. Uh, oh, uh, Mr. Lewis, roll call vote, please.
I have a question.
With the consent agenda, we don't normally take questions. We just roll with it. But after, if you want, absolutely. Go ahead. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Okay, next up is the superintendent's report with the itemized agenda.
Mr. President, board members, you have item number A, which is approval of proposal for Washington Elementary School, uh, roof, uh, restoration. Uh, these, uh, as you know, you've been receiving updates periodically regarding, uh, capital improvement projects. Uh, the administration received a, uh, proposal from Washington Technologies, and, uh, it was, uh, recommended as the lowest responsible bidder, including quality of service for a project cost of $1,084,262. Um, and we are asking that you award a contract. It is contingent upon approval of the contract language by the administration and final review of, by the solicitor.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second on the roof for Washington Elementary. Okay, Mrs. Denon, Mrs. Yousavage, uh, second. Questions or comments on the, uh, roof? Mr. Lewis?
I forget, I couldn't call up the five-year plan immediately. Uh, how's that compare with what was in the plan? Did you say?
Uh, this, uh, looking at the notes, if you ask the cost, it was approved at 1.16 million, so it, the, the, it comes underneath what was, uh, line item allocated for that.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Breeze?
Thank you. Uh, will that be fixing the area that's currently tarped, that you can see from the freeway?
I would, uh, uh, assume it would.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Mr. President, board members, the next item is a donation for the replacement, uh, the school board on, uh, field number seven, which had previously probably been identified as, uh, field hockey and lacrosse, uh, but we have moved to create numbers for all fields to be, uh, uh, equity, uh, conscious, um, and not label them by sport because we do use them as needed for other situations. Uh, Mr. Palladino is here to share a little bit of, uh, information regarding this project.
Good evening. The scoreboard on field number seven, which is the primary competition field for girls' across and field hockey, has been malfunctioning now for probably about two or three years. We've been having a lot of problems getting replacement parts for that board. Uh, the board is approximately 15 years old. Um, it was, we didn't purchase the board. It was done through a sponsorship program where an outside organization went and got sponsorships to pay for the board. That company received all the sponsorship money. We received the board for free. Uh, at that time, the district did pay for the installation of the I-beams and the hanging of that board. Two years ago, the administrators at Fred Bean, Fred Bean's Ford of Boyertown did contact me. They have an advertisement on that board, knowing that we were having problems with it malfunctioning, turning off in the middle of games, and they said if we ever need help with the board, call them. So, a few weeks ago, I called them, hoping that they would give us maybe a little bit of, of money to help install a new board, just for the installation piece. They were generous enough to offer us the amount to pay for a brand-new board and the installation of the board, just so they could keep their advertisement on the top for the life of the board.
Mr. President, board member, I asked Mr. Palladino to, to come because this was fast-tracked. Uh, normally, you would have gotten a lot of this backdrop as part of your committee, uh, process, so why it's so different? Uh, because when he, the issue became, it doesn't, it's not working, season's getting ready to start, to get it done, to get it, try to get it up and running, and again, try to get it up and running and functioning, the new one in for the season to start, is why we ended up having to jump over what would have been normally a committee meeting first and then, uh, here. So, that's why it's a little bit different, uh, after speaking to the president, to try to get it here and fast-track it so that we can get the resources and maybe have it installed and ready to go for the, uh, the season for the students. And all gifts, you know, are supposed to be come to the board for acceptance and approval to accept by your policy, uh, 702.
Okay, uh, looking for a motion and a second. Okay, Mrs. Denon, uh, Ms. Nyman, seconds. Questions or comments on the scoreboard? Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Very generous.
All right, and I would just ditto that. Uh, this is, uh, some more good news tonight. Uh, local business willing to help us out and community partnership, so, thank you, Mr. Palladino, for, uh, keeping that phone number handy. Uh, okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Mr. President, item number C is the creation of the Director of Facilities and Operations position. Uh, creation is probably a little bit, uh, misleading, uh, because the board previously actually approved, uh, the update to the job description. At the resignation of the last, uh, administrator who oversaw facilities and operations, uh, we put, uh, the job description up for review and updating to make sure that it was commensurate with, uh, today's standards and the needs of the district, that the board previously had approved, uh, that job, uh, description. In fact, that was the, I think, uh, conversation that we had about, uh, the lifting of the position, the person in that, uh, role. Um, it was previously titled Supervisor of Facilities and Operation. As you know, we've gone through an extensive process and have gone through at least three, maybe four candidates, and one of the reoccurring themes in that process was that many of them were already sitting directors, uh, or assistant directors who were pursuing an opportunity to grow in their career. Uh, we presented to the board previously through, uh, weekly communication and also in, uh, personnel meeting conversations about the candidates, as well as the need to, uh, update the title of the job description to make it more market, market competitive. It does not change anything that you've seen before, other than the title of the position. So, this time, we're requesting, uh, a change really in the title, uh, of this, from the supervisor of Facilities and Operations to the title of Director of Facilities and Operations.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second. Mrs. Yousavage? Uh, okay, Mr. Lewis, second. Uh, questions or comments on the change in the title? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
This is on all the personnel, right?
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Mr. President, board members, item number D is the creation of Teacher on Special Assignment to Support Attendants and Athletics Coordination. Um, this position is, uh, replacing an FTE that already exists, so it is not a new FTE. So, it is being funded by a current position that exists, which previously was the Dean of Students, which is currently vacant, uh, rather than fill the Dean of Students position. The administration is recommending after consultation with, um, the high school administration and the needs of the district, um, to, uh, create a position on, of Teacher on Special Assignment, uh, and they will support, uh, the attendance issues and athletics, uh, issues at, uh, high school. So, the administration is, of course, and the Board of School Directors approves the creation of the position of Teacher on Special Assignment, um, for attendance and athletics, which will be in lieu of filling the Dean of Students position.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second. Okay, Mrs. Yousavage?
I'll know.
Uh, okay, Mr. Breeze, thank you. Questions or comments on, uh, Teacher on Special Assignment? Ms. Nyman?
I'm confused. Well, regardless of that, I'm, I'm confused with the fact that, how many assistant super, or principals are we going to have at the high school? Because one of the ones was going to be the Dean of Students, correct?
No.
Or was going to help out with?
Uh, I would say to you, Ms. Nyman, this is the same number of administrators. It is not growing. Uh, this was discussed and closed and, uh, as a personnel item, and if you want to discuss further, to remind you, we probably should recess.
I'm expecting recess.
Okay, because it's...
Okay, the board will be going into executive session on personnel. We will be returning to the meeting. Okay, uh, we are back. Uh, we had a motion and a second on the floor. We had a motion and a second on the floor. So that was our, I guess, nine-minute, ten-minute executive session. So any other questions or comments on the creation of the Teacher on Special Assignment? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Mr. President, Board Members, Item Number E is the Personal Action. We'd like to present to the Board Retirement One, Classified, and for professional staff. We'd also like to present to the Board for Appointment, One, Administrative Appointment. We presenting to you for the position of Director of Facilities and Operations. I want to recognize him because this has been a long process. Mr. Charles Dresser, who comes from us from Bethlehem Area School District, where he previously served as a Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Facilities, and Operations. He also had a tenure with the City of Bethlehem in their Engineering Department. He also had a stint with... In private sector, where he was a Land Development Manager and Director. And then also was a Regional Projects Coordinator in the private sector and a number of other positions. But just wanted to highlight a few, since this has been a labor, I guess, of love it has become now. Mr. Dresser is here and like to extend, hoping the Board approves this, and we're done. Welcome aboard. Also for three... We have three professional staff appointments, seven classified. We're also presenting to you in the Personnel Actions, Extended School Year Program additions for 2019. We are bringing forward a position of Elementary Substitute Teacher, Ms. Douglas; a position of Elementary Autistic Support Teacher, Ms. Nag. You have a Summer Music Program, two professional staff members, and four substitutes in change of employment status, two professional, and three classified staff members. For FMLA and Leave of Absence, we have requests from five professional employees. I present the Board for Approval, the previously mentioned Personnel Actions.
Okay, looking for a motion in a second. Mrs. Dennen? Mrs. Yousavage, seconds. Questions or comments on the Personnel section? Okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yousavage?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
With that said, Mr. President, I'd like to extend administration's thank you to Mr. Paul Grunewall, who came back out of retirement to support us. It took longer than he had hoped, but he hung in there with us. So I wanted to publicly thank him. He's not here, but we'll send him a video clip saying thank you. But we do appreciate his willingness to come in and help us. And then when things did move us fast as we liked, he found a way to work with us, and we don't want that to go unnoticed.
And I think we should give a warm Boyertown welcome to Charles Dresser. Okay, next up, we have Old Business.
There is none.
Okay, then we have Public Comment, period, number two. Okay, we have one person that signed up. That's Chad Roth, and the topic is Contract.
Mr. Elsier, Dr. Bedden, and Board of School Directors. Good evening. My name is Chad Roth, and I am the President of the Boyertown Area Education Association. The BAEA is the union that represents professional educators, the more than 500 of them. Teachers, counselors, librarians, nurses, psychologists, therapists, specialists, and liaisons who are employed by the Boyertown Area School District. Members of the BAEA are dedicated, hard-working, and exceptionally loyal educators, each committed to the task of providing all students in our community with a high-quality public education and enabling all students to succeed in a changing world. Our members' passion for teaching extends beyond school hours and beyond the school day. Their commitment to students, parents, and the entire educational community are on constant display. The academic success of our students and this school district is a direct result of the professionalism of these educators. Unfortunately, the members of our bargaining unit have been without a contract since July 1st, 2019, and are now working in status quo. This has not come close to happening in at least the last 21 years. The BAEA and district have always collaboratively negotiated contracts, even in the toughest of times, before the previous contract would expire. It is unprecedented for this group to not have a contract. We began bargaining with the district in good faith in January and offered a comprehensive proposal based on historical data, figures, and comparisons from Boyertown and surrounding districts. We've met only a few times since, and the district took until March to formally respond to our January proposal. And since then, it has not shown up with any realistic proposals that demonstrate a desire to negotiate. Despite numerous attempts by the BAEA to ignite negotiations and move the process forward, there have been no meetings between the parties in months, and the next session is only scheduled for August 13th. Considering all of this, it's no wonder why our members, who are your passionate, committed, and loyal employees, feel forced into status quo. So I ask you to reflect on all of this and consider what allowing your employees to go without a contract says to these dedicated employees, what it says to this district, and what it says to this community. As educators, we believe actions speak louder than words. We look forward to returning to the bargaining table on August 13th and working with the district with the goal of bargaining a contract that reflects the value that we place on public education in Boyertown and the value and trust we place in these professional educators. We hope the district is prepared to do the same. Our members, this district, our students, and our community deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Board Comments. And I just want to remind the board, we have an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting. Mrs. Deroff?
If it's okay, I'll answer my question now. All I wanted to know was how you get on the list of Financial Institute? There's ones listed here. What's the criteria? How do you get on the list? Because we have other local banks that I see who are not listed, and I was curious as to why, or what you had to do to get on the list.
As far as I know, there's no criteria. That was the list that was there in years past.
That's not a good enough answer for me. There has to be some list or some way to get on it, or somebody makes a list out.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, go ahead. I think we have an answer.
Yeah, I always assumed, and maybe this is... I hope this is a good assumption, that if you were aware of better rates at a local bank, you'd go with them.
But this isn't... This isn't where they have their money. This is where they are allowed to do banking with. That's not saying they do bank.
It's not saying that we have accounts with all of those banks, as possible ones.
Yeah, I think there'd be an answer in the newsletter packet for the board. I do recall, from past experience, that there is some criteria consideration, whatever. But I don't know it, so there'd be an answer in the newsletter. Any other... I don't believe so. Any questions or comments from the board? Any other questions or comments? Okay, see Ms. Nyman, and then Mr. Foose.
Will we be getting board packets starting Friday again?
We've actually had packets for you this week and the week before that, but no one came to pick them up. When you asked for the last one, the ladies have prepared them. The week before that, they actually called you, Mrs... Yeah, Sherry called and got no response during the same period of time when she was contacting you about the iPad, and no response. They've had them both weeks, the last two weeks.
Okay, I did contact Sherry about the iPad. Nothing was said about board packets. And in your newsletter, you said there wouldn't be one, so that's why I was not stopping.
The actual newsletter said as needed, and we've had them. And she actually said she did reach out to you. In fact, she reached out to you, the ones that you asked for. When you say you didn't get it at the last meeting, they had it prepared for you the very next day that she reached out for you. And it went several days without any response. And then I brought it to you the last meeting, yeah. I again, you know, will seize the opportunity to say that we... It is a very arduous task, depending on the volume of it, when they put them together. I mean, it's, you know, you put together a whole packet and the volume of paper that we print, and yet we, again, everything's electronic. It's available to be read. So I would again ask the board, I'm not sure why we're still doing paper, for consideration for that, unless there's something unique or special.
Okay, Mr. Foose, and then I see Mr. Lewis in the queue.
It was brought up earlier about how there was... There were some tragic events last week that impacted some of the school community. And since there is a large audience here, and hopefully people that'll be watching online, I wanted to just briefly talk about something that's being undertaken right now by a couple of volunteers. The... Last year, the student who died in the flash floods last week, a year ago, did his own food drive and donated food to... He collected 45 pounds of donate... Worth of donations and provided that to the Boyertown Area Multiservice. So after the news of his mother, his unborn sister, and him passing, the multiservice shared the story, and it was the first I had seen it. They shared it a year ago. I don't know... I'm sure it got attention in certain circles, and people had seen it. I was not aware. And when I read about it, I was disappointed that I wasn't aware, that I didn't already know about this. And it was really touching to see that a child, at that time, the age of eight, would be so thoughtful and want to do something like that. So I wanted to do something to commemorate... To commemorate his thoughtfulness and his selflessness. And found out that there were some other people that had similar thoughts, and we started to pull together a donation drive, and it's being called Preston's Pantry Project. We have over 230 different locations, businesses, churches, neighborhoods, just individuals that are included on the drop-off locations, either our public or private list. And so if anybody has seen that, if you're not on social media and you haven't seen it, or if you were unaware, I just want to talk about that briefly. August 18th, or sorry, August 16th is the last weekday that we'll be collecting. The 17th, that Saturday, is dog days of summer in Boyertown. We're hoping to do something for that. And then on the 18th, at the multiservice, we'll be doing a sorting day, where people can volunteer, show up, help sort the different donations and items. It's open to anybody who wants to volunteer. Please reach out to us. We're encouraging anybody to get involved, but certainly, you know, a lot of students that may have either known Preston or ones who didn't and who want to follow in the example that he set, we're encouraging them all to come. We've been getting overwhelming response. There was a truck from Redners that dropped off two pallets of food just yesterday. So it's really been an amazing response, and I encourage people, if you're online, to search for hashtag Preston's Pantry. If you're not online, reach out to the multiservice, and they can get you more information. But we're hoping this is the first of an ongoing thing. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I was just going to second that. I was in Harlestown today and ran into some folks associated with emergency services, and they're putting boxes up here in Harlestown businesses there.
Okay, Mr. Boyer?
Thank you. I hope to be very brief, because I know we have an executive session after this. I just wanted to comment on something. A couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to go around the high school with our facilities engineer, and we took a tour of the high school and saw some of the items that needed to be worked on. And it was a great tour. Our facilities engineer was excellent. He did an excellent job pointing out those items to us. And following that, we had some training in board governance. And I have to say that our lecturer was excellent and used his best Socratic method to have us think about where we're going as a board. And I was able to stir the brain a little bit and to think about some things and contemplate since that time. And I have to say that, looking back on our tour of the high school, we looked at floor tiles, ceiling tiles, you know, pieces of sheet metal on the walls, things like that. It was really interesting and very, very well done. However, thinking about that later, we have to... I feel we, as colleagues, need to stop thinking about floor tiles and ceiling tiles and get our hands and get our heads out of the weeds in issues like this. And I think our superintendent said it best, we have to start thinking bigger, thinking big ideas and riding our financial ship. And I commend him for doing that. That's a big idea. I think that should be our top priority. And after that, we have to start thinking about, as our recent lecturer mentioned to us, we have to start thinking about our student outcomes and thinking about other big issues. How will we use our buildings in the future? How will we deliver instruction? Will it be the same as it is now? And I think I would encourage my colleagues to get our heads out of the weeds, you know, about paper versus electronics and about bank lists and things like that, and start thinking bigger. I think we'll benefit, as a board, by doing that in the future, and I think we'll benefit our students and our community. We need to think strategically. We hire great people and pay them a lot of money. We just hired one tonight to take care of those issues, like floor tiles and the color of the ceiling tiles or whatever, and start thinking bigger. And that was just the only comment I wanted to make tonight, because it was in my mind after that recent governance session that we had. So thank you, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to mention that.
All right, oh, Mrs. Yousavage?
Just a quick answer regarding the investment finances institutions to answer Mrs. Deroff's question. Our board policy is Policy 609 that answers some of those questions. There might still be some that we have after.
Okay. Mr. Breeze?
Real quick, I just wanted to comment on Mr. Dresser coming from Bethlehem. You can tell when they don't come from the Lehigh Valley, because they don't say Bethlehem, they say Bethlehem. But anyway, welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Deroff?
Does he want to talk? I just wanted to say I do apologize for asking questions that I don't know the answers to. So if that's no longer a privilege that I have as a board member, please let me know. Thank you.
All righty then, moving on to announcements. So just about any Tuesday night, we're available and here. Come and see us. I will tell you, the next two Tuesdays, there's no meeting scheduled. And the next meeting is Tuesday... And the next meeting is Tuesday, August 13th, right here at the Ed Center. We have a short human resources policy and parent, community, and intergovernmental meeting, immediately followed by a Finance, Facilities, and Operations Committee meeting, which we will be talking strategically on finances and vision statements. And so buckle up, I should have a great agenda for that. And again, that's Tuesday, August 13th. But the, all of our meetings are on the website. So with that, looking for a motion to adjourn Ms. Nyman a second. Mr. Breeze, meeting adjourned.